It is 5:31, so we will go ahead and begin our work session. We'll turn it over to Pete and Laura.
I heard after how quickly the committee meeting went last week when I wasn't here, so. Good to see everybody. We wanted to spend some time this evening. I know we've had a lot of conversations around just use of incentives, incentive policies. What have we done? What do we want to do? What are our goals and objectives with incentives? We talked about it some at our retreat back in February, so we wanted to take the opportunity this evening to just kind of use Pete as a resource to kind of walk us through Kansas incentives in general. In the packet were some of the existing policies that we do have and have had for several years. They do probably need some revising and tweaking. I know as Pete and I have been looking at them, there are some things statutorily that we need to catch up and some things like that, but just to kind of give you a feel and a flavor for what has been out there for quite some time. And then to share with you again what the incentive tools are, how they're used. There are some that we aren't currently using that we may want to consider in the future. But again, just to get some feedback from you all, you know, this is a new mayor, this is a new council. We know we have some projects that will be coming forward with a request for incentives, but just generally what is our philosophy at this at this point about the use of incentives to encourage private redevelopment. So with that, I'll turn it over to Pete. What kind of tag team? He's got most of the presentation. I've got some other additional information that we'll share and then we want to leave plenty of time for questions, discussion, all of that, so.
How do we start that? Oh, good, 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 good. Sure. Excellent. Well, good evening, everyone. Here we are again. Tonight it's incentives and there are lots of them. We're going to run through them tonight pretty quickly. The slide deck, we're going to give you copies of, so as you have time, you want to look back, give me a call, we'll chat about them a little more. But off we go. Next slide, please. We have to start with the basics and that is, why do we even consider these? And I should say at the beginning, they're not mandatory. You're not required to give them. They are totally discretionary and they're basically a partnership you try to develop with a developer. So what is our vision for a site? We start there. And are we willing to use incentives to realize that goal and also kind of stimulate things to move them along? And how long are we willing to wait for redevelopment? And with any redevelopment, you have a loss, a temporary loss of revenue, but it's revenue generally you didn't have before. So people argue both sides of that coin, but the bottom line is you're giving up revenue for foreseeable future. So what do we get in return? That's part of the analysis we have to make each time we consider incentives. I put on the slide greenfield versus brownfield development. We're actually very lucky in Mission because we have no greenfield. Greenfield is Southern Overland Park cornfields that I personally don't think need incentives, but we are redeveloping our community. And in doing that, we have to consider incentives to bring folks in to do that redevelopment. Also, some cities have target businesses they want to try to attract. And if we find one of those businesses, we have an arsenal of incentives we can use and we can be very attractive to the development community. And then sadly, we have to look at what other cities are doing. Some cities are very liberal with their incentives, some are very stingy with them, but a lot of what goes on in the Johnson County area is based upon what other cities are doing. So we have to consider that as well, be competitive and be smart while being competitive. Next slide, please. You can put the whole slide up if you will. That's great. Here we go with the word salad. You ready? We've got TIF and we've got CID's and we've got TDD's. We got IRBs, we have CTAs, we have BIDs, we have NRAs, and then we have economic grants. These are the primary incentive tools we will use in Mission. There are others that are designed for rural communities, the major cities such as Kansas City, Kansas and Pecan and Wichita, but these are really the ones that we want to be taking a look at that are both affordable and effective. Next slide, please. Okay, this is a new slide. Laura, did you make this slide up? I haven't seen this one before. Okay, well, we begin our incentives with this middle of an application. I'll just read along with you. We do a pre-development agreement, which basically is a funding agreement. And frankly, we'll probably change the name to just that, a funding agreement, so people don't think you've already agreed. We've seen that before, but it's really just, it's a cost recovery mechanism so that we get our costs recovered whether we go the next step or not. So that's why we use pre-development agreements. Can I have my next slide, please? Well, we are, but you got to tell me these things before we start. In every incentive project, you have to have a development agreement. There's no statute about them, but you're not wise if you don't have one. It sets, as I say, it establishes a long-term relationship. It sets our duties, our rights, how this is going to work, because normally these incentives go for a couple of decades. So you've got to have a long-term relationship with your dance partner, so to speak. So we want an airtight contract, something that we can enforce and also gives us our rights under the economic development that we are trying to seek. Next slide. In the development agreement, though, we have certain protections of the city. And these, most of these will be new to you because they're sort of in the weeds in the development agreements, but some of the things that we can do to force the developer to move on with the project, we can withhold reimbursements, we can withhold permits. We also, in some cases, have had what we call escrow funding agreements or payment agreements. And in those agreements, we agree that for every dollar we put in, the bank has to put in a dollar and the developer has to put in a dollar. So nobody gets ahead of each other in the financing. That's called a pari passu relationship and it can be one for one, two for one, 10 for one, but we normally have those and you'll see that in the prior iterations of the gateway development agreements. And we have these things called clawbacks. They're not as effective as you'd think, but what we can do with clawbacks is we can shorten the incentive term. If you don't build by this date, we can shorten your incentives down to 10 years. Or we can terminate your reimbursements entirely for a default. Or we can adjust the percentages of our cost sharings or our revenue sharings. We can also require payment and performance bonds, third-party guarantees, those are fairly rare, but you can ask for them. And then, of course, nuclear war. We can terminate the development agreement and pretend like we never got started. So we do have some protections. We have some remedies that we can build into our development agreements. Next slide, please. The one we're going to see most commonly is tax increment financing and it's probably the hardest one to understand. So I wanted to spend just a couple of minutes talking about that. We're talking about an increment of tax, not all of the tax, but an increment. And the increment is generally used to reimburse the developer. We don't issue bonds very often. I'll talk about that in a moment. But the tax increment, instead of going to the county, comes to us and we divvy it up pursuant to our development agreement. But with TIF, you can only use it for what we call horizontal improvements, such as infrastructure, parking, landscaping, land acquisition, but nothing vertical. With one exception, well, two exceptions, a racetrack, which I don't think we're going to have here, or parking garages. They're accepted too. Next slide, please. It helps me to see pictures. So I have a picture here for you as to how TIF actually works. If we start with a vacant piece of property with assessed value of $1,000 and our mill levy is 10%, our revenue is $10 or $100. Okay. Once we create a TIF district, that original property assessed value remains $1,000 forever and we still get that $1,000. You'll see that in the yellow in the graphic. Once the developer is finished with the project, let's say it's worth a million dollars. So we've gone from 1,000 to a million. Suddenly, our assessed value is going to be $100,000. So the total revenue, well, the total revenue would be $100,000. And of that, we get our $100 base, the yellow. The red goes to the school finance package at the state level. We can't take that away. So they get their 20 mills. Then the state of Kansas still gets its 1.5 mills. That's sort of the green color. And then the blue, $78,400 is the tax increment that we can use in tax increment financing. So when you compare the base to a finished product, there's a lot of money. There's a lot of tax involved. The developer still pays the tax. We just get, in this example, $78,400 in increment to play with. That's our monopoly money. So that's how TIF kind of works. And when you get confused, refer back to this. It does make sense, I think. It made sense to me anyway. Next, please. Did you want to talk before we get too far down the road? Do you want to talk about some of the benefits or do you want to wait? Wait a little, okay. There are three ways we can fund TIF. We can do pay-as-you-go. And that means as the revenue comes in, we reimburse the developer. We don't pay the developer upfront. We let her or him wait for the money, just like we do. And then there is no bonded indebtedness concerns of the city. The second way is we can use special obligation bonds. Those are limited obligations of the city and are only paid from the revenue. So it's only TIF that's going to pay those bonds. No city revenues are involved. We have no liability. And then we have the big gorilla that we never use, and that is general obligation bonds, which is our full faith and credit. We're liable for the bonds whether the developer pays taxes or not. So we use those very, very sparingly and they do count against our bonded indebtedness limit. Next slide. So how do we set up a TIF? First, we set up a geographic area. We call it a TIF district and we've done that in Mission. We have, what, about 10, I think? And once we make that district, we freeze the taxes. Right in place, right where they are. That's going to be our new base. And then within the district, we can set up little pods called project areas. When we do that, when we set up the TIF district, the school district and the county can veto. They can say, no, you can't do it. So there's a hearing process we have to go through. We have to give notice to the school district and to the county so that they can say no. Until about three or four years ago, I'd never seen a school district veto a TIF, but now they are doing it because it does cut down on the school's revenue. Once we set up the district, we have a project plan. That's the nuts and bolts of what's going to get built. And that project plan can go up to 20 years. Sure, Ken?
When you set, when you establish the district, the base is set, is that what you're saying?
Uh huh.
And that base never changes going forward?
No.
So if the property appreciates in value during that period of time, the base is still what it was?
It is. And the difference is increment. Now, whether we use it or not, it's another story, but it is increment.
Okay.
Yeah. Let me give you an example. Laura and I were talking about this because most people think the project, the TIF district and the project plan sort of come together at once. And that normally does happen, but I'll give you an example where it didn't. In 1999, I think, yeah, 1996, I was City Attorney of Marion and there was state legislation that said that any enterprise zone within the state of Kansas is automatically a TIF district. We scurried around and we created an enterprise zone that was both sides of I-35 from Johnson Drive to 75th Street and goes back several hundred yards. That was our TIF district. The first project plan wasn't approved for seven or eight years. There was another project plan approved last year. So it doesn't necessarily mean you're going to get a project plan for the entire district immediately. And through that TIF district, all those car dealerships came, the hotels, and that whole corridor is developed and it's all under TIF. So normally they're together, not always.
Is the argument then for the business that they like the TIF district because they know that that base is always going to be the same and that's why they'd want to move in?
Well, actually, the, well, the base doesn't really benefit them because as they improve it, the assessed value will go up, creating an increment. And they just don't get the increment unless they have an approved project plan. So theoretically, the city gets the increment as our money.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there's TIF districts that have been sitting for a long time that have a base wherever it is based on the district when it was set. Why would the city not be interested in like re-establishing the TIF district or removing it entirely?
Well.
Increase the base?
Well, actually, you want to keep the base as low as you can for economic development because it gives you more TIF to work with. If we, let's say we take a TIF district and we dissolve it, say, yeah, never happened. Whatever the value is, it springs up to the next time we create a TIF district, which leaves less increment above. Does that make sense?
And Pete, that's because you never have to give the full increment in your project plan, right? So you could, as one example, say, we know the valuation was X when it got locked in as the base, but it's now Y, so we want the city to capture Y for the entire time.
Sure, yeah. And that frequently happens. There's a sharing of the increment. And people in city administration like that because we don't have to share the money with the school district or the state. Be very honest about it. So anyway, the increment actually benefits the city.
And could you just talk a little bit about the portion that goes to the school district and the state from that formula you're talking about?
Right, that goes, that comes off no matter what. That always has to be.
The percentage, though, that's different than it normally would be?
It's based on mills. It's 20 mills for the school district and that's statutory.
Always 20?
The state.
Or whatever.
Right. And it goes to the state for school districts, but it's 20 mills. And then a mill and a half for the state. And again, the legislature exempted that from being used for TIF. So that goes no matter what.
Interesting. Thank you.
And Pete, that's because districts can do a local option budget and assign additional mills, right, at the district level, but the 20 mills is statutory and can't be touched.
Right, that's right, yeah.
And so the, both the state and the, and the school district in the instance of an economic development project are going to be able to take advantage of. So the city is the only one whose base stays the same, right? So the schools, 20 mills for school finance and the one and a half mills for the state, they do get to take advantage of the increase in the assessed valuation or the growth that happens there.
Right, that's exactly right. Excellent. Let's see. Oh, the only other thing I'd say about the project plan is it takes a two-thirds majority of the governing body to approve a project plan and only a simple majority to create a district. So you might keep that in mind. And Kansas law is strange in many ways, but sometimes the law talks about the city council. Sometimes the law talks about the governing body. When they talk about the city council, it is whoever on the council can vote. So if your mayor doesn't vote as part of the city council, the mayor does not vote on city council matters under state law. Governing body, though, includes everybody. So the mayor does vote when the governing body is required to vote. So it takes two-thirds majority, including the mayor. Okay, now, ready? Go right ahead.
So I know we've had some questions about where do we have existing TIF districts within the city of Mission. And so this map, well, it reflects the existing TIF districts, the largest of which was, is the Rock Creek TIF district that was established. And that was a city-initiated TIF district following a revision of the FEMA floodplain maps, which put a significant amount of property surrounding the Rock Creek Channel into a 100-year floodplain that hadn't previously been in a 100-year floodplain, which meant that development was limited and stymied and the amount of reinvestment that could occur within a floodplain is regulated differently than other properties. But I wanted to just kind of run through, I know we touched briefly at the retreat and I think you heard me talk about, you know, these are public-private partnerships. And the partnership piece of that is important. And I know sometimes it feels, it can feel frustrating. It can feel like, you know, a developer is coming to you every time with a handout to say, you know, what are you going to give me? And I think we have historically approached these partnerships looking for what is the benefit that the city is going to receive as well? If you are asking for a benefit, we expect to have something in return, otherwise it wouldn't be a partnership. It would be a one-way street. So I wanted to just touch on because I think, and I'm working on a handout that I didn't get finished before tonight, that gives you some history and context of some of the previous redevelopment projects. So total project costs, total amount of incentives that were generated and both in terms of what the approved TIF or CID expenses were, looking at that as a percentage of overall project costs, looking at just kind of the physical components of the project and then thinking about what we asked for in exchange for the use of incentives and then what other things that we received. Because I think it helps provide some, you know, a little bit different look at how we want to, if we want to continue to use incentives particularly, how do we look at the things that we value and how do we start to extract things that are valuable to us? And I think one of the things that you'll see is that even though these things weren't necessarily called out specifically in our TIF policies or CID policies, I think that things that we value or pursue or are looking to secure as a part of these partnerships changes over time. So as you have policies in place, I think you also want to be creative and provide the flexibility if they are tools that you want to use to be able to do that. So if we just start, let's start with the TIF district number one, which is Mission Crossing, which is at basically Metcalf and Martway. So it's where the Wellstone and Chick-fil-A and Culvers is located. So that was a lane for development back in the late 2000s. Total project costs for that were about $24.2 million and that was a 6.2 acre site that had housed the former Herf Jones Publishing Company since 1954. It was a vacant building at the time. And the project involved the demolition of that existing building and the construction of three standalone buildings with about 20,000 square feet of commercial space and ultimately 100-unit residential facility. That has, TIF and CID both were used in that project because there was a retail component and the CID was an opportunity. And I know Pete will share some additional information about that. Roughly a total of about 5.1 million in TIF and CID revenues were committed to the project, which is about 21% of the total project costs. We also had a clawback provision in that development agreement. It's the one I think we've done so far because initially the developer came to us and said, we don't, we don't have a residential project identified to meet the mixed-use criteria that had been established for that district. And we said, okay, we'll give you a certain period of time. And I think it was, you know, maybe five years or so, seven years maybe, that if you don't secure a residential project of some type in that time period, then a portion of those TIF revenues and CID revenues that have been committed to the project will be taken, kind of taken off the table, clawed back off the table. They were able to find Wellstone fairly quickly and I think that's been, you know, incredible addition. So not only was that multifamily piece consistent with the mixed use, but it also was, met a senior housing need that had been identified through Direction Finder survey at the time. So at the time that went up, we had Mission Square. And that's another one I'll just kind of connect. That's not shown on this TIF project map, but Mission Square is a project where we use senior housing revenue bonds to support the development of that project. And it was around the time that we were having a lot of conversations around density and increased density. And if we want to encourage density and not these parking fields and seas of, you know, paved parking out in the front of every business, we had to take a really hard look at our own operations and we had a big paved sea of parking around this facility that was not full to capacity most of the time. And so we said, we, if we're going to encourage that in the private, in private redevelopment, we need to put our money where our mouth is. So we went out, solicited an RFP, we looked at potentially mixed-use projects. We didn't get any proposals, but we got the proposal for the senior development. Again, that was a need that had been identified in the community. So we were able to sell that piece of ground for about $550,000. As a part of that contractual arrangement, the developer was ultimately 501(c)(3) and would have been tax exempt, but through that contract, we were able to negotiate a payment in lieu of taxes. And so that's, it changes. The first 10 years, it was about $53,000. It has dropped in year 11 to about $47,000, but it covers memberships for every resident at Mission Square here at the community center and then provides additional money for landscaping. There was a time we were using a portion of that to lease additional parking across the street. So that's a little bit different type of incentive situation, but again, we were able to not only take advantage of, you know, the purchase price of the property, but to get that payment in lieu of taxes. Two on this piece of property is what's called Herald Corner. And that's that little piece of ground that sits kind of behind Pride Cleaners and Unleashed and Panera, that that area over there. That was a former printing company that was a vacant building. That was, I think the police had more calls than anything else over there. We were able to acquire that for a very reasonable price. We demolished that. The thought at the time that came very close on the heels of the Mission Crossing development. And Lane Four at the time was talking about land assemblage in other blocks surrounding their Mission Crossing development. And so we looked at that as an opportunity to say, if we were able to secure this, we might then be able, if a developer was able to assemble. if, if we were able to secure this, we might then be able, if a developer was able to assemble land, we might be able to bring this piece of property to the table for particularly a structured parking situation. We've seen land valuations in that area increase to the point where developers are not able or willing to do that land assemblage. So there's the potential there. Once, once we did that though, we also had a proposal for a low income senior housing project. It was about 32 units, so a very small project where the developer was seeking low income housing tax credits through the state of Kansas. They went through three application cycles, were never able to secure those tax credits. And so although there is no continuing relationship with that developer or development agreement, that TIF district still is in, in place on that piece of property.
On the Mission, on the Crossing area, is the city responsible for the streets that go?
No, not the interior streets.
So those are part of?
That's Lane Four's responsibility.
Okay.
And one of the things that I didn't touch on, which is really important. So the other thing in Mission, in the Mission Crossing project, we were able, so the developer dedicated that corner, what is now Legacy Park, that corner. So that value of that parcel was about $350,000. Plus they contributed another $100,000 for construction and improvements in the park site. So as a part of that negotiation, we were able to add green space and do so primarily. I think the city had to kick in about another $25,000 to, to make that park happen. But essentially we gained that green space. If we look at 10, oh, that's the locale, we'll come back to that. So eight. Uh, it's not on here because it's not a TIF. So Cornerstone Commons is at Barclay and Johnson Drive. So Natural Grocers and then the two buildings that have had some combination of restaurants over time and some office space. That was formerly an automobile, automobile dealership. And that was an opportunity, there's a CID in place on that development. There's no TIF that was requested as a part of that. But because of the nature of the businesses that were going in as a part of that development, the CID was what was requested. But that developer, that was about a $9 million project. The incentives that were approved were capped at about one and a half million dollars. Uh, and as a part of that, they were to be reimbursed for some very specific improvements that they made. So they dedicated right of way at Johnson Drive and Barclay. They did this, all the streetscape improvements were done at the developer's cost, stormwater improvements at Johnson Drive and Barclay. And several other things like that. So that was actually about, again, about 20% of total project costs. We're going back in, in the development. So then when we look at, 10, which is the locale, we know that is a project that was about $42 million that demolished an existing building that had been sitting vacant for the better part of a decade. So it was elimination of blight. We, again, were looking at density in that downtown corridor and ways to bring more people. This is following the improvements that we'd made, the $10.5 million in streetscape improvements to the downtown section of Johnson Drive to enhance the walkability. That is a TIF, uh, TIF project and property TIF only. As a part of that, we negotiated 50 parking spaces in the garage to be dedicated as, as public parking through the, the downtown streetscape improvements and working with the merchants. There was a lot of concern about impact or loss of parking or enough available parking. So it was important for us, we didn't have to acquire the ground, we didn't have to build the parking structure. We were able to do that. And then in addition, we were able to get a $250,000 basically cash payment based on certain milestones that, 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 that developer met as a part of that project. Um, the rest of the Rock Creek TIF districts that are established here, we now have 3A, which is the Mission Bowl site. And I think you all are familiar with that, you know, the project there. Again, the actual building itself was out of the floodplain. The remainder of the site surrounding the building was still in the floodplain. Uh, and so the work that we did on Rock Creek brought that out of the floodplain. Then you, you looked at, you know, securing some live work units. We looked at the, the first introduction of affordable housing considerations. And then an actual certification to a LEED Silver standard. In both, I believe the locale project and the Gateway project, previous development agreements, there had been requirements to build to LEED Silver, but not to certify to the LEED Silver lever. So sustainability had been a kind of continual theme through many of the, the redevelopment agreements that we have done. Nine, I'll skip back up there is Silvercrest at Broadmoor. That was a TIF district that was established previously at the JCPenney Call Center site with a developer who was looking to build a senior housing project. We lost that one to, ultimately that was the developer who went and built the project at Meadowbrook. And, but that, again, so no, and we know that that's the, the proposal that we anticipate. We haven't seen the TIF application yet from block, but we expect we approve the pre-development agreement for that. And we expect that to come forward. Um, and then, so again, the rest of these districts, three is Rock Creek One, which encompasses the Gateway site. Uh, and we can, I mean, I think everybody's familiar with the last iteration of the Gateway project. And I will tell you, it's very different from where the agreement and the incentives that were approved, you know, 15 or 16 years ago. I think Pete was talking about, you know, bonds being issued. There was a point in time at which general obligation bonds were included as a part of that project. There wasn't TIF sales tax revenue sharing that had been contemplated in previous agreements. And so as that, that project has moved through its various iterations, that relationship in terms of what's coming over to the city side of the table has changed very dramatically over, you know, over that period of time. Where we ended, in the most recent agreement, we had, we were getting 45% of the TIF sales tax that was generated and 1% of the transient guest, guest tax that was to be generated in addition to repayment of $12 million in stormwater improvements that we had made to the site several years ago. So with that, again, I, I will kind of wrap up a handout, which I'll get out to you that kind of provides some of that other context. But I think it's helpful just to think about, as we think about how we want to approach future projects, the things that we've considered in the past and what we may want to consider in the future. Yes, Ken?
When these negotiations take place, are they always with the developer only? Or does it include their funder, their banks and other financiers as part of the project negotiation?
Kind of depends. I mean, we typically have not been in a situation where we're sitting at the table with a loan committee or the bank. But as a, as a part of the process, ultimately you have to have a signed loan commitment from a lender that's based on the, the tenants of the deal that you've negotiated in your development agreement. So if you, if they have a lender that isn't willing to sign off on that, you don't have a project that you can move forward to finance or, or do something like that.
If we were to want to do public art as part of an incentive program, is that something that would be eligible in terms of having public art as part of whatever development takes place?
I'm, yes.
No, you can, go ahead.
Great lead in, Ken. We're going to CID, which has at its core, the placement of art in cities. That's kind of how it all started. And in most CID projects, are we ready? Oh, thank you. In most CID projects, there is some form of public art. So we need to keep that in mind. I'll also tell you a little bit further down and won't take long. I'll tell you about another way we can do it that's kind of slick. But yeah, I'm all over that. It's a great idea. CID, Community Improvement District, is a self-imposed sales tax up to 2%. It is imposed in the district itself and the district can be created if 55% of the landmass ownership files a petition with the city and the city accepts that, that petition. The CID tax can be levied for 22 years. And the TIF or CID project can be funded with pay-as-you-go, special obligation bonds or general obligation bonds. The problem with CID is its uses are so broad that we tend to negotiate a whole lot on CIDs because you could build the building, you could pay your employees. You could do all kinds of things with CID that we as a city don't necessarily want to incent. So we're careful with CIDs and the development agreement will be very specific as to what items should be included. And again, Kansas law, it's so interesting. Kansas law started the CID statute with a list and it was art, public improvement sidewalks. And then someone snuck into the legislature and no one saw them and changed the first sentence of the statute to say, including but not limited to the following, which means anything. And so the developers are always saying, well, I, I can do that. I can buy new tires for my car. You know, it's, it's anything. So we're very careful with CID, but typically it's a one cent sales tax. And that's driven primarily by consumers. And, you know, consumers just won't shop places where there's a 2% addition. Next slide, please. The sister to CID is the TDD, which is a Transportation Development District. It's identical to a CID in all ways, except you can only spend the tax revenue on transportation-related improvements. A good example is the Oak Park Mall. They have a TDD of one cent. And that was used to redo the parking lots, security, lighting, to dress up, the, dress up the mall. Interestingly though, in connection with that project, we learned that you can use TDD revenues outside of the district. And there were funds committed to the intersection of I-35 and 95th Street to improve the traffic flow into the mall. So you can use it outside the district so long as there's some nexus to the main project and its transportation related. TDs are kind of out of favor now because they're very limited. So you don't see them very often, but we could use one if we wanted to. Next slide, please. Industrial revenue bonds, we're going to hear a lot about those two. This started, the industrial revenue bond statute started as a stimulus for the acquisition, construction and equipping of commercial and industrial facilities. It then expanded into multifamily housing. The industrial revenue bond statute was designed to give a tax abatement, a tax, a real estate tax wave off up to 10 years for a new project. But it had an additional provision to it. And the additional provision was while you're building your project, you can also get a sales tax exemption on building materials and taxable labor. This is all morphed now to most developers ask for industrial revenue bonds just to save the sales tax and not get the tax abatement. So it's, it's basically just a wave off of the state sales tax on building materials and labor. Very valuable. Rule of thumb is at 7%, currently 7% of construction costs. So you multiply that times the cost of some of these projects and that's a substantial number. But you don't have to give tax abatement in connection with it. You're merely waiving the sales tax exemption or sales tax on materials.
And I would say that as we've considered that, we've quantified, we've tried to quantify that and the value of that as we look, as we move through the process and when we bring a project forward to the council, so that that gets factored into the list of any other incentives that might be used as we're looking at that overall, you know, percentage of total project costs. And I might, before you, some, the other thing that's I think important to touch on is in, in a TIF, when a TIF or CID is used, because Pete was talking about eligible expenses. So when we go through the approval of a TIF project plan and there's a budget associated with that, and we will identify TIF and CID if both of those tools are being used, eligible expenses. And it may not be so, and we've talked about this before. For example, in the Gateway project, we excluded legacy costs. So carrying, interest carrying costs, architecture and design costs for previous, you know, iterations of a project. So we have the ability to go through and limit, yes, there's a list, statutory list of what are eligible expenses. We can further limit that in terms of what we want to consider as eligible expenses for the project. And then the process by which those get reimbursed is the developer has to submit documentation for all of those expenses, which is reviewed and then categorized. And then typically you get that early on at the completion of the project. And then that kind of establishes this number that you draw down and, and pay against when the increment comes in. So there is a verification project and we have thrown out expenses.
Many times.
Many times that the developer has, you know, has submitted memberships to chambers and travel and a variety of different things. So there are checks and balances throughout that process, even once you approve the use of a TIF or CID that assures that we're only paying for those things which we agreed to pay for upfront.
Are there considerations by the state legislature to eliminate the sales tax abatement in the IRB?
I've, I've not heard. I can check though.
I'm just wondering is, because the state is basically losing revenue, is that by, by the city doing that, right?
Right.
Now, now some of that sales tax comes back to the county and comes back to the city. Typically, I mean, if we are granting an abatement of sales tax.
That's everybody's sales tax.
But isn't there some amount of that sales tax that would go to the state would be revert, revert back to county and revert back to municipalities?
No, the, the exemption is absolute. It's an absolute exemption from sales tax on building materials. So no one gets any sales tax. That's, again, it's a great value, of great value to a developer. No. Sure.
My first question was, does Missouri have that too? Um, my other question was, is there a minimum spend for incentives for a project?
You can determine that yourselves. That's part of the process.
So somebody could come with any size project?
Currently, our policy, I think, says it has to be a $5 million project or lar, or larger.
That city and not state.
Right.
Okay.
And that's one that I think we all ought to look at again. A $5 million project isn't very big anymore. We were, when we set that policy, it was kind of like, well, that's going to be a huge project for us. Not anymore. So we want to look at that, but it's totally up to you.
Kristen, did you have a question?
Yeah, we use that sales tax exemption, I believe, on Keith and Associates. And I was just wondering what that project value was. Because I, I couldn't remember if we had a minimum, like Hillary was asking.
Yeah. That one I don't remember.
I thought the minimum in the. Okay, great, all right, thank you. And I thought the policy minimum related to TIF or was it for all incentives?
I don't remember a limit on that.
So the $5 million was TIF specific?
I believe it was.
Yeah, that's on page seven of the TIF.
We need to look at that. There's, there are several things in the policies we ought to take a look at. And one of the ones that jumped off the page when I was looking at it last week was in the early days, the city could actually condemn property for a TIF district. That's gone. We don't get to condemn for economic development purposes.
I saw that too.
We need to get rid of that. Next slide, please. There we go. A CTA is something that is very rarely used, but you can, if you petition the Secretary of Commerce and convince the secretary that a business, unless it's incented, is going to leave the state, you can grant a statute or a constitutional real estate tax abatement. And having heard all those conditions I just went through, they're very, very rare, but it's, it's out there. And if we were to have one of our best businesses in town say, we're going to go to Missouri, we might want to look at some kind of tax abatement under the Constitution. So it's another, I didn't want to name names, but of course. So it probably won't be used, but I needed to include it on the list. Next slide, please. Ken, this is where I'm going to circle back with you on improving the downtown area. We have what they call BIDs, Business Improvement Districts. What we do in a BID is the mayor appoints a district planning committee for a geographic area of the downtown area. And we come up with a list of extended services we can provide to that business area, including public art, enhancements, all kinds of decorations, things of that nature. And then the city subsidize a portion, subsidizes a portion of that and the balance is assessed back to those businesses. I have found with BIDs, most businesses are all over it. They think it's great because for their dollar, they're getting $5 of value and helping their business and the business community. This is one we haven't used in Mission, but I think we ought to look at it and just see if there are some target areas of our business community we'd like to improve and see how it might work. So it's out there. Next, please. Almost done. NRA's Neighborhood Revitalization Act is when a city takes a blighted area and basically agrees with the owners of the property that if they will perform certain improvements, they will get a tax rebate, a real estate tax rebate. And it's based on a Tiff formula, so it's the same kind of an increment. And the city actually hands them a refund check every year of the, of part of their real estate taxes. These are tricky because we have to have an interlocal agreement with the school board and the county to be able to take those taxes and give them away. So they're a little tricky, but they're used a lot in Wyandotte County, for example, and they're more blighted areas. They're very popular. We don't see them in Johnson County very often.
That the city of Shawnee uses the NRA's.
They do.
And for example, the Sunflower Development Project that was considered at the former Wonderscope site happens to be in a Neighborhood Revitalization Act area. And so, and I, but I also think part of that process is the consideration of that, once you establish the district, as I understand it, is much more administrative. So the project comes through the door and it's much more staff working with that developer as opposed to then the council evaluating and considering the use of those incentives. And it can be used in residential and commercial areas.
Right. Exactly. Yes.
In relation to residential areas, can you go house by house or does it need to be block by block or neighborhood subdivision, et cetera?
It could be a single piece of property. It could be a single home. I'm not, I'm not sure the statute envisioned that, but it doesn't prevent it.
I'm particularly interested in this and I know this isn't the time to dig into what we want and don't want quite yet. But I'm particularly interested in this just because of the way Mission was laid out in that we've got these houses from 1920, 1950. One's here, one's here, one's over here. I think that could be a real opportunity for us to find ways to help homeowners make, you know, upgrades or potential, potentially consider selling.
Sure.
Yeah, and I think, and we can, several years ago, we did a presentation to the council about the potential of creating these. At the time, we didn't, we hadn't identified really what our goals would have been for the program. And so it kind of was shelved. But I think certainly if we identify, you know, some goals and objectives for that, this is a tool that it could be something that could be really valuable for us.
Yeah. Love to explore it with you. Sure. Okay, well, last and least, economic development grants. Some years ago, our Kansas Supreme Court found in what we called dicta, which was, which means it doesn't really belong in the case, but the Supreme Court said it anyway. Is that pretty right, Sally? I don't know a better way to describe dicta, but that's what it is.
And it's not finding precedent then either. Yeah, just sort of commentary by the court.
Yeah, it just doesn't belong. But anyway, they said that economic development serves a public purpose and therefore cities can issue general obligation bonds and give the money to developers in the form of economic development grants. The, as you can probably tell, these aren't used very often, but we've seen them in towns like Coffeyville, for example, where they were losing their main manufacturer. And the incentive packages otherwise available just didn't help very much. So the city issued a general obligation debt to give a grant to, in this case, I think it was a glove manufacturer, to keep him in town. So we luckily will never have that problem, but that is another, another arrow in our quiver if we ever want to use it. So that's kind of the A through Z of incentives. I will say this. I hope as we go forward with projects, and we've had some great ones, and I will tell you, EPC, which is the locale, Lane 4, these developers sing our praises. They got great projects, great relationship with the city. And that means a lot in the development community. So we're going to see more and more developers, I can assure you. And I hope we can go into this with a collaborative effort. The idea that we're trying to get a win-win and try not to be as adversarial as sometimes we'd like to be. Because I will tell you, in my experience, the adversarial nature of these negotiations are more the product of the attorneys and not their clients. And I'll, I'll end that sentence there, but that's where we see most of the acrimony is with the attorneys and not the developers. So we'll try to create some good partnerships going forward. Yeah, Ken?
With a Business Improvement District, are you allowed to basically say what kind of businesses you're looking for to go into that area?
Sure.
So if you wanted to think about other things than a typical fast food joint or whatever, that you could probably determine what the nature of that business is that we're attempting to attract.
You know, the theory behind the BID is the mayor appoints a committee to study that business area, interview the business owners, find out what they need and want, and kind of come up with a wishlist and then incent it. So sure, you could target a specific business or you could say we want 10 florists in this block and try to incent that. It's all just, again, it's communication with our business community and finding out what their needs are and what our needs are. Works very well.
And a business district could also make application for a Community Improvement District for an additional sales tax. So you could create a Community Improvement District, for example, around kind of the core of downtown, you know, Mission and then those, that additional sales tax revenue could be used for enhancements, beautification, you know, grant funds probably for storefront improvements, that, that sort of thing. So in addition, so there's two-way, you know, but again, 55% of those property owners would have to petition the city to create that district as opposed to the Business Improvement District, which is mayor-generated.
And has the business partnership ever talked about this as a, an area of interest?
And we've talked about it with them. I think there hasn't been a lot of interest in the past. I think part of when, when we established the Main Street 1 and Main Street 2 zoning regulations, which were really focused on attracting retail businesses to that corridor, kind of more of that thought. What we've seen over time is there are a lot of service-oriented businesses that have landed there. So the ability to actually generate enough in CID sales tax to do anything in terms of a significant project is probably questionable. The other challenge that you have, particularly in Johnson Drive, is you have, many of those businesses are tenants and not property owners. And so while a business might be supportive of that, the property owner's signature would be required in order to actually establish a Community Improvement District.
Are there any good local examples of those Business Improvement Districts?
I'll look, Sally. Sure. Absolutely. And one kind of interesting story, the, going back to the, to the Merriam-Tiff District. At the time, that, Merriam, Merriam set up the Tiff District and then Merriam Town Center came along, the developer. The only thing available for Tiff financing at the time was general obligation bonds. And so the city was asked to issue $12 million of general obligation bonds. The city administrators' hair turned white. I mean, that was, that was a huge number. So we did it. And he said, you know, there ought to be another way around this. So we wrote the AG a letter and said, could we do a pay-as-you-go? And the AG said, sure. And that's how pay-as-you-go came about. Now it's very popular. Yeah, Ben.
So on the CID, that's an additional sales tax. That's not like a giveaway, right? That's just the
Right. It's just self-imposed tax.
And that could be, could that also be property tax or is it just sales tax?
Sales tax.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then they, so the community can apply for that, but it requires the city's consent?
We have to create the district.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But it takes at least 55% of the owners of the district, this geographic area they want to create.
Pete, you made reference to consumers not being really excited about a 2% or 2-cent sales tax. Are there some examples of failed projects associated with that or just sort of scuttlebutt of people don't like it or?
No, it's just been studies.
Studies done on that?
You know, in the early days, everybody thought, oh, who cares about a penny? And then as CID's began to develop, some studies actually showed consumers would go across the street to save the penny.
So, but a penny has sort of been okay, but two people start having questions?
Because it generally around here, it pushes the sales tax over 10%. That's sort of the bright line we've seen.
And I think you have to be cognizant of the type of business and the, and the price point at which things are being sold within a CID district. So if you've got, if you're buying appliances, if you're buying furniture, if you're buying something of that nature, where you may have that really significant, you know, purchase amount versus a restaurant or, you know, something along those lines, that difference may be negligible. But I think we have seen, and we've seen in iterations of some of our projects where some of the tenants were hesitant. Right? So even though the developer, as the property owner, might have thought about making application, we, one of the things that we confirm through that process is, are your tenants supportive, right? Are you going to be able to keep that lease with your particular tenants with the imposition? And you may recall at one point, there was two different CID rates on the Gateway when there was the Walmart that was part of that. So there was a 1% and then a 1.5% on a different portion of the site. So there's a lot of work that we do behind the scenes to make sure that as they're making that request or evaluating that, that it doesn't jeopardize some other portion of the project.
And a couple of car dealerships in Johnson County are in CID's and they have suffered sales as a result.
Can you talk a little bit about the concept of stacking these incentives? Because it seems that it's not just a Tiff, it's also a CID that they're asking for. Plus, they're asking for a sales tax. I'm just wondering about the stacking of these incentives.
And that's a great question, Ken. And the only time you can't stack them is if one incentive abates taxes and the other one relies on taxes. Meaning, you can't have a tax abatement and a Tiff district. Everything else can be stacked. And it really is up to us to decide how that stack will look. But that's the only time you really can't stack them.
If I can press my button. Um, I follow up to Ben with CID improvements. Do, do there have to, or with a CID, do there have to be improvements made? Or could an area just decide that they wanted all of a sudden extra percentage?
No, no, because we create the district on their petition and we decide what they can spend it on.
Okay.
So they don't get
But it's pretty loose. So if they decided to, they can't just keep it?
No.
Okay.
No, and
Okay.
What we do is
There has to be some sort of physical brick and mortar.
We collect the taxes and then they sign requisitions proving that they've spent the money on what we have in our development agreement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then my second question is, I'm wondering how, follow up to Solly with the examples. I'm wondering how this fits into the comp plan in relation to what we'll be seeing and, you know, where the two intersect. And particularly thinking about examples and thinking about, at the retreat, we talked a little bit about the Overland Park Downtown Council or looking at Vision Metcalf. Or, you know, are these, seeing other examples and, you know, I think that would really help get it, get our wheels turning in terms of something we could do.
Yeah, I think we can do that. I also think that we can make the connections. I think that's going back to what I talked about in that maintaining some flexibility in our policies and approaches. And I think the policies even talk about the unique character and that, you know, a lot of times we talk about setting precedent and a lot of times you'll have a developer that comes in and says, well, you did X for this project. I, you need, my project is similar, you need to do X. You know, the needs and the goals and objectives of the community in terms of incentivizing development change over time. They're not static. And so, you know, based on, for example, you know, some of the examples that I was sharing earlier talked about incentives that were given for senior housing projects because that was a need that was identified specifically through Direction Finder surveys and work in our comprehensive plan. If we look at Direction Finder survey results now, that's not a housing type that is necessarily prioritized or requested. And so we, there are a whole variety of tools, whether it be the Direction Finder survey or the comp plan, that community feedback that help us think about, you know, what is it that we value? You know, we've, we've looked at green, incorporating green space and other, other projects. This is, you know, parks and adding to park and parks and green space in the community is something this, I know this council has talked about. Affordable, again, affordable housing, sustainability. But it may not look the same for every project that we evaluate.
I had one question about the land piece because I know you talked about the park, park land that we got. The land does have to be adjacent. Is that correct? So they can't like also own some other parcel and gift it to the city? Or could they, if it was a developer who owned multiple pieces?
Sure, they could. Absolutely.
Any other questions for Peter, Laura?
I guess I have one.
Your turn.
So in the packet, when we're looking at the, kind of the priorities and spelling it out like this, we wouldn't be taking any action or discussion tonight, but what would be kind of the next step for revising this? Or, you know, starting to add some of those contemporary policies that we've floated around here the last couple of years on these projects?
Definitely need to go back, as Pete said. I think we need to take a, do a review of our existing policies and we need to tighten some things up and clean some things up. But we can also, as a part of that, make some proposals. There are some communities, for example, I believe the city of Lawrence has a specific written policy about and criteria for sustainability objectives in order to be considered for the use of incentives. I don't know, there may be others who have something similar around, you know, areas of affordable housing. So I think that we might, we can look at how we want to incorporate that in a way that is flexible enough that if those priorities change over time, you know, I don't know if the council policy or some other document or way to do that. And then we can certainly, I think, look at, you know, what we know we have coming in the more near term will be Tiff and CID requests and the issuance of the IRBs for the sales tax abatement. So those processes. So those processes are fairly clean in terms of, you know, how we evaluate them and how we bring that, that information forward to you all. But then we can also look at the neighborhood revitalization, maybe the business improvement district, some of those other tools that if there are some other target areas that we want to potentially more proactively, you know, rather than waiting for a developer to come to us and ask for that incentive, that we can take a more proactive stance. So we can start to kind of weave those into work sessions and bringing information forward to the council.
Hillary? This may be too in the weeds, but say we were to codify some sort of, you know, expectation or objective related to sustainability or affordable housing. Would it be? I mean, would, as, as staff, would you still be required to entertain conversations with regards to, you know, a pre-development agreement? Even if they're coming forward without those said anticipations on their end?
I think the pre-development agreement still makes sense because we will, we would have to, there's still going to be a process by which they may come initially without those components. And we would say, here's, you know, here is what the council values, here are the policies of the council. So there's still the opportunity for us to incur the cost in those conversations. So I think the pre-development, I think, as Pete mentioned, and I know we talked about this after our February meetings is maybe changing the names of those agreements. Because it results in some, and I hear reporting and misunderstanding, but those are really our protections. And I think would be important to have in place anytime anybody is coming forward to ask for the incentives.
What role does the Planning Commission have in this process?
I'll take a stab at it, see if I get it right.
Planning Commission really doesn't get into the incentives at all. The most the Planning Commission does is find whether or not a project plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And that's really the only time the Planning Commission gets involved.
With respect to the property in TIF District Number Three, are we still thinking of developing a flow chart to be able to kind of show where we are in that and all that? Okay.
Yes. All right. I don't see any other questions. So thank you, Pete. Thank you, Laura. And plus you had anything else to add as final remarks? We all set? All right. That concludes our work session and we'll see everybody again at seven for our council meeting.